It's six P M. It's October, happy October. Six P M, October first. Thank you. And I call this county council meeting to order. Roll call, please. Councilmember Edwards? Councilmember Lina Leo?
Here.
Councilmember Thar?
Yep, I'm here.
Mayor Green?
Here.
Council, uh, excuse me, councilmember Best?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
And councilmember Hill?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd all please join me in the optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Um, before we actually get to formally approve the agenda, I would like to add a, a, the acting city administrator report to follow our presentations. And so if anybody, uh, or if anybody is in agreement with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as men here.
Best moves to approve the agenda as a man.
Thomas seconds. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. This is simply the approval of minutes from April second and September seventeenth. Our gap is getting closer. Oh, I just skipped past public comments. Thank you for keeping me honest, Steve. I appreciate that. We actually have people, um, backing up. Let's move to public comments for items not on the agenda. I'm gonna go first of all for the people who signed up and then we'll open it up. Okay? So we have Nancy Bailey. Can you please tell us where you live and you will have your minutes?
Good evening, everybody. Um, I am Nancy Bailey. I live at seven eleven Ninety First Street in Ludville County. Um, thank you for having me. Um, I just wanted to give a quick update about the Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully you guys obviously do the email this week regarding the launch, um, twenty business sector hours on November twenty third. We would love all of your attendance. Um, and it's really just a way for us to, after five years, come together as a business community. And, and other partners within our community and how important it is that, um, this hundred and eleven year organization is being remounted and relaunched. So we just wanted to formally invite you personally. And if you didn't get the emails, we would love to make sure you're on our email distribution list. And that's it. And good evening.
Thank you. That's gonna be fun. Let's just move on to Kate Bartlett.
Hi, I'm Kate Bartlett. I'm the superintendent of the split district of one ninety-two South Toledo. And I'm just here to say a quick thank you to council for passing a resolution in support of the school board's no love the override initiative and for encouraging the citizens of Ludville to vote yes. The school board and I are all deeply appreciative of all the support we're receiving from elected and other organizations, including, um, the county commissioners, the hospital board, Julie McCluskey, numerous nonprofits, Gosis Niditas, and City Council. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Erin again.
Hello, I'm Erin Duggan. I live at three oh one West Seventh Street in Ludville. I'm here on behalf of Ludville Main Street. I just want to thank all of you and the city and city council for your continued support for our program. And we would like to personally invite you all, everybody online and everybody in this room, everywhere, to go to our auction. It's this Saturday. It's our fundraising event. It's our, really our only fundraising event that we do just for our program. That's in the Chamber Opera House. We have some amazing auction items. We've got a lot of experiences that have been donated. We have handmade upcycled things. We get to explore some unique parts of the chamber that we haven't done. So it's gonna be really fun. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, let's open it up to other public comments for items not on the agenda for people in, in chambers. Anyone online for items not on the agenda? Okay. Thank you, Steve, again for keeping me on track. Now let's move on to the present agenda for approving our minutes from April second and September seventeenth. Questions or motions with proof?
Does please to approve the second agenda. Woman led seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, all were in favor. Moving right along to presentations. We have a presentation from the E nine one one authority. Um, Chelsea? See her? Sorry, there's a glare. This is still flashing.
Pick the other ones while I'm on the glare.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, hey, well, right over here. But I do not see her. I can try and contact and maybe we can, we'll just, we'll juggle it up. Um, Sarah Mudge was here.
She just stepped out.
She just stepped out. Um, I have a lovely Lori Ty. Let's just go with Lori Ty's presentation. We'll just, we'll just fix it all up. Oh, sorry, that's a good job. Really cool. Um, first of all, I'm Lori Ty. I'm here on behalf of H B C. I was gonna say I'm Allen Sis for the fire department. That's irrelevant at this point. I am actually here on behalf of H B C and, uh, Mr. Bill Komkowicz, who is, has a grant, got a grant that's state historical fund. Um, because we are a CLG, a certified local government, we are the pass group for that. Um, had we not been a certified local government, Mr. Komkowicz would not have the opportunity to go for that state historical fund grant. So because we are, and that's kind of what I wanted to preface my whole presentation with is I put a lot of stuff in the council communication form, kind of being sneaky and saying, here's kind of why we're a CLG and what we, what that means and that we're, you know, not everyone, everyone in Colorado is a CLG. So, um, it affords us opportunities to get grants that were not otherwise um, available to us. So I, I, I kind of wanted to give you an overview because I do not believe that this particular cap and block rehabilitation is gonna be the only one that we're passed through for. So, um, we're gonna set up kind of more of a generalized template for agreements with people who do this. Um, Hillary's office and the city, you know, attorney's office and I have been working on trying to get a template for this right now. We have an agreement with Jane Daniels, who is Bill Komkowicz's grant administrator. I do wanna say that the grant that he got is for construction documents. So you will see on your agenda this evening that he has a C O A for window replacement. That's not really related to what the grant was, meaning that did you deny his application? He still gets the grant money. It's for, it's more for the construction documents and not a lot of the work he's getting ready to do. Um, on the note of his window replacement P O A, the H B C did have, you know, a work session and a public hearing for that and are very excited to see that building. It's a loving care that it needs to get back. And he, of course, wants to take it back to what it was, you know, in eighteen hundreds. So, um, I kind of crossed a bunch of lines here. So I do wanna ask you guys if you have any questions about the CLG, being a CLG, the process through which the grant we will do. I do wanna mention that state historical funds almost always have a match and Mr. Komkowicz is no different. Um, the money that the city got to give to him is forty-six percent of his grant project. He is responsible for like the fifty-four, whatever. I probably have his numbers backwards, but he's responsible for more than the grant. So he will have to pay and to get the tax credits, he has to pay those invoices himself, and then turn around and invoice the city to get reimbursed from the grant funds that we currently hold. So that's how it all works. The city is not actually out any money at all. We are out a little bit of admin time to process the payments, but he has a grant administrator handling all of the other stuff that goes to the state that are deliverables required by him. And I will say that in the template that we started working on when Jane first gave this to me, um, there is a clause in most of these agreements that allow the pass through a percentage of, of the money. So say the state, the state historical fund gave him fifty thousand dollars and then we might be asked to pass through entitled to, I think it was two to five thousand dollars off of that for our admin services. That was not written into this contract because I don't think we any of us understood that process. But we'll be working with the state more closely on drafting our template and that might probably be something we can look into. And then we wouldn't be out any money or time at all. So, do you have any question? I went a lot longer than I thought. Sorry.
Got ten minutes. Anybody have questions for Stein? I have, I have a total, and pardon my ignorance here, but is the state historical grant that is separate from the tax credits? That's a person could apply for, right? So so this gentleman has received a grant, but also then can take the amount that he spends and apply for.
Absolutely. And that's the beauty of being a CLG. And because we just recently, H B C recently had a tax credit workshop. I do believe this is gonna kickstart a lot more because not only could you possibly get the grant, on top of that, you could get the tax credits for the money you spent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Okay. Um, so I guess we'll just go backwards, uh, and do a presentation and discussion from Ludville, like on regional housing authority.
Good evening, Sarah Mudge, Regional Housing Authority. Um, I shared with you, I was asked to come tonight, um, to discuss the regional housing authority, uh, projects and programs and responsibility moving forward that we discussed, um, to discuss current and projects being planned for. Um, and then our twenty twenty-five budget with you all. So I did share, uh, two documents with you. One was the budget and one was a, um, uh, we're calling it an organizational flow chart, though it is, does not have bubbles and lines. So, uh, it is really a list. Um, Mayor, I don't know if you have any suggestions on working through this or?
Um, I just, I, I, well, we'll see what council would like, but I thought it was really helpful for me to kind of see the, the partner programs that you guys are working with or planning to work with. Um, there's a lot more than I anticipated. I think they're great. What?
So I can recap?
Yeah.
I can recap a little bit, um, uh, where we have been, where we started, right? We started, we thought the R H A, the housing authority would be a developer or act as a developer and then project manager and quickly realize the complexities and challenges with that. With the R H A not really having a steady funding stream, not nearly, almost not having a bank account, not having, you know, um, just really in the infancy of developing as the housing, local housing authority. Um, so the, the project, uh, the, the twenty-two unit project, a lot of applications were sent out for, uh, for funding support for, um, it's now that under the county. And the city has its real estate project and the county also is, uh, we're doing a capital project, but also planning on Harrison Avenue, um, in the Ballfields area. And, um, that's long-term, long-term. So, so the regional housing authority had a couple of conversations about, and what is it that the group should focus on and do, um, in the reality of its capacity? Um, the first bullet you see there is, first, we, we need and we would like staff, which is a conversation we need to have or trigger the meeting on posting a job description and hiring staff, uh, at what level and at what salary, which will be part of, maybe a bigger part of our conversation, um, when we get to the budgets. Um, and then so promotion of partnering in existing programs, as we mentioned, Mayor. Uh, there is a list of the council of governments. We have navigation, home repair, um, landlord tenant rights, uh, program support, self-help program, down payment assistance is a different uh, opportunity, which we have all talked a great deal about. So the regional housing authority is engaged with the impact development fund. And we have not taken advantage of that yet, I do not believe. Um, but we have access to, uh, with a partner who is, um, seasoned and exercised in, uh, matching, matching homeowners or people who want to be buying, um, with an opportunity for down payment assistance. Um, and the county is, uh, attempting and still trying to develop a county de restriction program um, on a personal opinion note on the county de restriction program. And I think I've said this in a couple of, uh, at a couple of tables, I do think that our, uh, de restriction program should be a voluntary one, should be a light de restriction. And we're not talking about de restrictions put on public projects. We're talking about voluntary de restrictions. Um, if we might have the funding to entice and incentivize people to engage in a program like that. Um, I, I think that we have a short window of, I couldn't begin to guess how long, five, ten years of people who have owned homes here. Um, ten plus years ago that bought a house at a horrible rate perhaps. And so, um, when we are looking at partnering jurisdictions to exercise this program and offer to pay anywhere from ten to nineteen percent of a market value of a home as an incentive to put a light de restriction on homes. I just don't think that we have, um, we don't have the demographic that would be there forever who have bought or kept their homes when they were twenty thousand dollars or given homes by family members, um, in generational, uh, giving. Um, and so if and when that de restriction program is developed and underway, I do personally believe that there is kind of a life span to that program where we will no longer be able to afford doing that simply because, uh, the county and their community really doesn't have the finances and the support yet. Um, that, uh, Vale and deed or some of the county partners do have. Um, other things to explore, uh, with a housing authority is employer benefits and lending, um, and advancement opportunities, talking to employers about, uh, educating their folks with the county. Employees can lend against their retirement funds. They can, under certain circumstances, um, discuss and request certain advancements in pay if they are, um, experiencing hardship. So this is something that we could, um, talk to employers about and understand if that is happening or if there is a way to make something like that available for employees and of employers in the community. Um, we have Department of Human Services programs and resources. Um, you see the bond list there, wraparound for youth, wraparound for adults. We have child ware, welfare, adult protection, we have TANF, SNAP, um, low income energy assistance program. And then we have temporary housing and transitional housing, which, um, often fall in the TANF and kind of emergency needs. Um, we have the Lee County Advocates, which, uh, councilmember Best, I'm sure could elaborate more on for temporary housing homelessness and transitional housing opportunities. And we have home repair programs, uh, funding given to C four at the county or outside, uh, sources will and has been going towards home repair, energy assistance. Um, and we are trying to explore some bigger major home repairs, um, and dabbling in whether that it's like some sort of agreement or voluntary de restriction for higher level, um, home repair costs. Um, let's see, USDA has programming, the COG, the council governments, um, state and a care program, W A, W A P, weather, weatherization assistance program, um, Energy Smart Colorado. Um, DHS has also some programs with loans. Um, and moving on then to beyond promotion and education around existing programming partners, we have community education, um, outreach and information. Um, and below that on the list, we have direct support services, which also includes the outreach um, and education, um, specifically to, specifically to soliciting homebuyers and of course renters for appropriate projects um, across, uh, any, any project, either private, city, county. Um, so this would, this, this is a part of partnering with COG or others to provide workshops. There are some instances where, um, some folks are required to have certificates for attending programs, um, in order to be eligible. And so we wanna make sure that people are well aware, um, not only just to prepare themselves for homeownership and larger investments or plan that for, uh, into the future, but um, um, are, are, are financially, uh, able to, to enter in that kind of, into that kind of, um, commitment. Um, we will, the housing authority intends to help qualified buyers for local projects um, and run a lottery if we have the staff to. Um, we also are a, you know, one of the primary core functions of the housing authority is to be an eligible recipient of some of the federal funding, um, which, um, has occurred. Um, and act as a pass through. In this case, if we do not, or until we might have the capacity to be project management and, um, act as a developer. Um, other things that I think are relevant for, you know, today's conversations, uh, and recent past and those to come in the future are participating, uh, convening and participating in with our development stuff could need. Um, some input and advocating for, uh, inclusion and ideas in, uh, local development and some of those private developments that, that come, uh, requesting input to the city and county. And then paying attention and giving feedback to local policy projects and programs regarding, um, housing impacts and community needs. And just reminding decision makers and policy makers of, of kind of all the cascading, um, effects that, that specific policies and, and programs may have. I'll stop there.
Questions for Commissioner Mudge on all of the various and sundry. You guys are just, are, are you planning to be kind of like just a clearinghouse for all of this information? So if I just had a housing inquiry, my roof is leaking or I need a room or I wanna buy a place, like, that might be
Yep, yeah.
You guys might be the first.
I, I.
Is that?
I, I'm sorry, uh, that, that's crazy. We don't have an employee. Um, we, I, I think.
I, I, I view this as a vision, right? Like, not saying that that's.
I think that's something that we should have a discussion at, at that board. Um, I don't know that we have necessarily fully committed to something yet. Um, whether, what we decide to be and have that genuine conversation as current board members as to what type of services we will provide and what future we would. I don't see why we wouldn't for that, but I wanna be careful around whether or not we start going around saying that's the type of service we provide when those types of services kind of already exist through other organizations. Like, I mean, I know I do that actively at C four and a pretty damn good job at it. And so does advocates. So I don't know that we need to do the same thing again, three times in a row. Um, as much as other things like rental units that don't exist. So I genuinely think that that's a conversation that should be had and can be had. And I would appreciate, uh, input from all of the, uh, city council as to what direction they would like to see, um, that regional housing authority really move into. I'm sure depending on the employee, that might be flexible in terms of like their experience, if they're able to run on the ground or not, um, and what programs we might be able to offer right away. Um, especially if there are no cost ones. So certainly I think there's an openness to that, at least from my perspective, being on the board and having not really had a full discussion about what that looks like at the board level outside of just like, well, this exists. So that's, that's just kind of my two cents as a board member, an active board member in that board and how I feel about it.
Mayor Proten, sir? You wanna unmute?
Yeah. Thank you. Hey, Sarah, thanks for presenting tonight. Um, a question I have is now that, well, it seems like what our community or one of the things our community really needs is affordable rental units. And, and that was supported by the Roots, um, housing, uh, study. Um, now that the regional housing authority is not doing development, but more management of programs, um, what? What is the path forward there? And what would the R H A's role be? And pardon me if this is too big a question for this conversation, but that is a question I have about the R H A right now.
Yep. So to councilmember, they asked, uh, women they asked points, this is an ongoing conversation and we have not had the conversation about staffing either. Um, our September meeting was canceled due to a quorum issue. Um, so that was meant to get us a step closer to what it is that we will be doing. And I agree one hundred percent and the entire council's input is very much desired and needed, um, as well as county, county side and, uh, board commissioners. So I do think that this is a ongoing, developing, evolving. Um, what is it that the R H A can do? And it certainly also depends on what is it we expect a staff person to, to be doing, um, and what talent we might attract to do and then perform our expectations. Um, to councilmember Thar's question, uh, kind of jumping, I guess we could jump into, well, that is a, might be a good segue into projects that are happening and ongoing. Um, one thing, you are correct. We have a need for rentals, uh, rental units. And there is not really a, an organization that has a bunch of faculty to develop or manage at the moment, a significant number of rental units. Um, the county has partnered, or sorry, the city has partnered with the chief of housing trust. Um, and so I understand that your twelve unit project now has made four potential homeowners and eight units now will be rentals and that the housing trust is exploring different funding so that they can act as that management and that landlord, if you will, which is a huge investment for the housing trust. Um, the housing trust also reached out to the housing authority to create an LLC, um, in which, uh, we, we did, we did this to, um, partner with the rail yard, the city's project, um, so that the cit, the land could be tax exempt. This is one for property to, property taxes, the real property in the land for the housing trust in perpetuity as well as, um, sales taxes on construction is also exempt. So that's a huge incentive that the housing authority, the housing trust, and ultimately the city, right, are a partner on creating, um, uh, perhaps an easier path through this very difficult and challenging, uh, all of our construction projects. Um, the county is doing the twenty-two units that are not rental, but we are planning on Harrison Avenue. Um, for, and putting out in our P, our press for proposals, um, to developers for a Lytech project. Um, I think the Lytech project, as far as we have ever talked about, and I understand this is a huge uh, opportunity for the community. This is kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity, um, to, to really invest, not only would it take perhaps that long to actually construct, um, but, but the funding that comes from the state and, um, perhaps federal funding is really significant and it is a long-term investment of a developing, um, organization that we might choose. They are long-term managers of that unit and they are then a part of the community and providing this housing. We don't know how many numbers that looks like on Harrison Ballfield yet. Um, and I do not, uh, um, please do not misinterpret that, that the only project on that would be a Lytech project. Um, it definitely has to be that combination of, uh, perhaps market rates. I, I mean, we could get enough but gap funding to maybe not need to do that, but typically the formula um, with a developer, the jurisdiction or any other jurisdiction that might offer incentives includes market rate, rural housing. For the housing, um, we look at that light tech and then that light tech, we come up with a lot of funding that, um. Again, I, I, not having been through that experience, I don't know exactly how, like what percentage of a project like that. Light tech funding would support.
Now, so, uh, maybe I answered this question a little more. Uh, it's a, it's a good description, um. We did have a training at the Regional Housing Authorities, the actual steps of the Regional Housing Authority, which I believe is a question to become more rental. Adjacent and have that be part of our projects. Um, would require adding a lot of capacity, but it is very possible. Um, and doable um with our consultants that we had early on the year to kind of describe what the process is. Uh, to run a rental project, kind of uh going as in-depth as to understanding what the, um. What the, how it would look like to rent out units from the utility point of view to repairs, to long-term planning. So we do have uh the ability to do that as a housing authority. Um, whether or not we go through with that and do that, I think depends heavily on only the type of board, but also the. Staff capacity and know-how. Um, so the steps would just be us creating that focus. And in those situations, usually, um, those regional housing authorities and other communities, from my experience. Um, also tend to run light tech units, uh, which tend to be a much more lucrative option for the community because. It tends to be cheaper than outsourced uh management. And on top of that, tends the money, I mean, just. Correctly goes back to uh the Regional Housing Authority. So it is certainly an option long term. Of course, depending on how fast the county moves, depends on how fast we have that availability. And we all know we need to move fast on it. So, um, it's a race against time, I guess, but it is possible. And certainly something that we could push for, um, to have available to our community in a. Especially neutral way that's uh still beholden to the community since it's a. An intergovernmental agent, um, or I guess government department. Uh, that exists on its own with its own uh community representation. But also in conjunction with the city and the county. So. My personal feeling of that is that that's our best bet, is that the realistic bet. Hard to say, but it's certainly possible. And in my opinion, something we should strive for.
Thank you both.
Other comments or questions?
Thanks, Sarah. Couple of things. Um, is the RFP for the master plan for Harrison Field released already?
For, for the light tech project?
For the master plan. My understanding is that it's gonna be. Yeah, I know.
Um, we have the infrastructure, the master plan. I do not think that the master planning has been.
Okay.
But after, but it's both.
That comes before the RFP for the actual light tech project. Are they hand in hand?
That, uh, they, they may be hand in hand, I believe. Uh, we're kind of working through that, that is conversation they're having at the staff level of like. Is it just the light tech or is it the light tech and master planning so that it really is the full, um. We have a master plan, uh, but I think you might be on, I think it is the full, but I apologize, I. My, uh, I'm not.
No, that clarifies. Yeah. I'm also wondering, what is your confidence in the debruising passing and what measures are being taken to ensure that that passes? Cause I see the four A yard signs all over the place. I, I think I saw something about the debruising at the. Fair Housing Fair.
Yep.
Um, that's the only place that I've seen a campaign.
Yep.
I'm just wondering what, it's, it's vital that it passes. I'm just wondering what, what the plans are to get the word out on.
Yeah. Um, that's also a great question. You really need to lead on both the generation and staff and without staff and with. Certain restrictions around board members, um, being able to participate in that, that, that has been a challenge. Um, but uh hoping that folks and, and, you know, all your knowledge about the debruising and. Folks are just spreading that word of mouth. Yeah. Um, but there are no yard signs. Um, and, and I hope that, uh, Jackie. The housing staff now has, has, was attending, is attending housing fair. Um, and I can touch base with her to see if she has any other, so to help the authority out.
And then, um, last thing related to the partner referrals. So. There is a very robust existing referral network already in place. The advocates are running coordinated entry. I agree that it doesn't make sense to make that a big focus of the Housing Authority, but it would make sense if you were to get. A staff who's sort of more on the ground level for them to participate in that network and come to coordinated entry.
Yeah.
And maybe sit at the task force and all of that stuff.
Yep, yep. No, a hundred percent. Don't need to duplicate that effort just to, just, I mean, I don't think we can have enough people who understand. The web of resources that are available. And so steering people in the right direction is the conversations that have happened thus far at the Housing Authority. Unless it is housing specific, different, different kind of housing programs specific with like council governments for people in housing. And we wouldn't need any of those programs. Those are existing programs again that we would be promoting, working with those partners. To kind of help the invasion of a, a community with.
But chances are, you need a community, community member wouldn't be going to the Housing Authority.
It's, I mean, that's, that is possible, right? No, we are not, we're not saying we need to be the what, the hub, the one you come to. Everybody has their own expertise in the layers of the, uh, existing resources that are available. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and, and if we can better, uh, um. I'm, I'm also thinking of a, a, a community member comment about, uh, one of our counseling conversations on. The potential of including community benefits like childcare in Harrison Avenue and the. The, the conversations have never been to provide that service as the county, but to provide the home or to provide the structure. Right? So realizing and needing to be cognizant of the nuance of the leaders that we use in that. Happy to get that feedback of like how we can better. Eliminate like what it is the role of the Housing Authority could be.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Commissioner Mudge?
Oh, uh, just on the, on the rental question too, um, and to council member really asked, uh. Points, it, all of that is possible. Um, I do think that. Uh, as, as one housing board member, I think it's imperative that we like act responsibly for a. Permanent and, and revenue stream in perpetuity before we offer that, because we certainly don't want to. We need, I think, we need depth in the authority to provide that service and be sure that that is something that is going to. Um, be there and available, especially on a large volume scale. Um, and I don't know that that's, um, I think, I mean, the conversation we had, whether or not there is an opportunity for the Housing Authority to do that. And gain any revenue generation in the Harrison Avenue project. Or not, you know, I, I mean, I think it really depends on what our current climate is of the Housing Authority. And all of that will evolve. So going through the existing uh and future planning on projects. Um, the opportunities that lie across city, county, housing, Chief Housing Trust. Any more questions there on like what that kind of web or that looks like? I mean, that's a lot of work for many years to come. Um, and also, I, in my personal opinion, you know, given, um, some of our vegetarian constraints and or. Projections into the future, um, I, I might not be surprised as an individual, like those are really our. Only opportunities to build housing. And I think we need to also look with an equal weight on, um. Programs that preserve existing housing stock and, um, the housing permissions for folks. And if you would like, we can move on to the budget piece. Um, the total budget projected or proposed, um. Right now is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, this again is also very much a work in progress. Um, again, the, the, excuse me, Housing Authority is having a special meeting tomorrow evening. To review our budget, to post our budget, solicit fee, solicit feedback from the community. Um, and uh we then have the same deadline as you all to, um. Decide on and post a final budget. Uh, so, so questions uh for me, us are for feedback. Um, what questions do we need to discuss through as a housing authority for council? And, um, are we. With the IGA and two A funds, I mean, that is a question of how, how, um, reliable. Those are into the future. I think one thing, um, that I, I have identified or we have identified that. Needs to be discussed is, um, some funding for staffing for like a, a. Term, requirement in a year between the housing or the city and the county. Um, but other than that, I would love any thoughts, questions, feedback to bring back to the Housing Authority for the start of that, especially for.
Yeah, and I think some of, some of those questions that you put forward to me, just involving what have we done in the past. Um, so you need a PIF helmet to get through our. webs or, or shared files sometimes. Um, I have not found the final IGA for the. Housing director position. I found a draft. And in that draft, it outlined that. Depending on the two A funds, that the, this, because it was a draft, it was somewhere between like one-third or two-thirds. Of the housing director salary would come from the two A funds. In addition to that, I find prior like once annual, I'm not sure where the amount. Came from, um, but there, but the county, um, like through the Regional Housing Authority invoiced. The city for a certain amount in twenty twenty-two and a certain amount in twenty twenty-three in October. So here we are. I can't find any documentation except for the first IGA, which outlined. The, the, with the creation of the Regional Housing Authority, the city would kick in this much and the county would kick in this much. But then the next year, those numbers. Shift, but I don't know how that second number was, was arrived at. So it seems to me from what I gather. Is that a certain percentage of the two A funds go to a certain percentage of the director's salary? And then there's an additional, excuse me, shared, um. Or contribution from the city that I believe also comes out of two A, but I'm having trouble clarifying.
So, yeah, um. Sixty percent of the salary of the housing director at the time was funded through two A funds. Um, and then I think we ended up dedicating the rest of two A to, um. Uh, to the Housing Authority period. So that's where the other percentage comes in. So.
Different, it's one invoice and then this IGA that talks about the salary.
Exactly. And that was set to actually expire this year. Um, so to, like, we really. If we're gonna go off history, it would just be saying we are going to give all the money to. The Regional Housing Authority again, and sixty percent of the salary will be paid by the city. And then, uh, the rest by the county or sixty-six or something like that, two thirds.
I, I've seen one, two third.
It's two thirds. It's a larger portion of it is paid by the city.
And I think that's typically been like seventy from the city.
Yeah, um, so that's how it used to operate, uh, that was set to expire this year. Um, and, uh, I mean, to Sarah's point means that we kind of put a timeline on what, um. And a play would have though, I don't think any of us would have anticipated that we wouldn't do that, renew that. Deal. It was more so just a, hey, what are we gonna do long term?
Councilmember Hill?
Yes, hello, good evening, um. I had a question on the budget. Um, this, this uh synopsis of the budget from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. Um, under grants and contributions. Um, does any of this reflect what was contributed through two A? For twenty twenty-four?
Uh.
Which page are you looking at in our packet?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, okay.
Is that, which sheet are you, there's housing, like, county sheet, county sheet.
The grants.
Grant sheet.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if any revenue from two A. Is reflected in this twenty twenty-four numbers.
Personally, oh, here we are. It. Does not. Appear that way. And my guess of the intergovernmental assistance is where that should be. And it doesn't look like. County or city funds are included in here. Um, I can certainly go back and clean that up with finance. Uh, the, the. Challenge of our past budget conversations has been the integration of the projects with. Just the Regional Housing Authority kind of operating budget. And so this year, I think we will have a. Lot easier conversation around that. Um, but I can get you, I would like seeing. What was actually budgeted and then the actual of twenty twenty-four, if I, I think, even just that year, if everybody wants. Prior years as well, although again, those might be confused with the project budgets, but I can get the. Budgeted amounts and the actions spent.
So according to the IGA, and this is from May or April twenty twenty-three. The county invoiced the city for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars and with the IGA attached. And so I believe that that is that, you know, that, that shared portion is not for the director's salary. But just the contribution to the, to the IGA, or excuse me, to the Regional Housing Authority through the terms dictated in the IGA. Where it does say like every year, we're gonna re-decide how much to do this. Um.
And that funding, I'm sorry.
Proportional shares of funding.
Is that the initial terms, the initial funding?
No, this is the second, the, the next year. The initial ones were twenty twenty-two. Um, so the IGA, uh, from. That, that, that is updated for twenty twenty-three, says the county would pay four hundred and fifty-two thousand, the city would pay three hundred and eighty thousand. For the proportional shares of funding. And that is just in the. That is included within the intergovernment, the IGA establishing the Regional Housing Authority. But clearly the numbers were updated for twenty twenty-three, so. It sounds like.
Yeah.
We need to look and see what the two A.
Yep.
Uh, cause I don't think we, that there has been any number in the invoice for twenty twenty-four. I know the, the, I remember seeing the, the, some of the salary come through, but then it's different, so. We should sit down. Um, our finance director is just barely back from being out and she's still kind of sick. So I did. I did approach her today and she was like, okay, look at that.
Yeah. It was a challenge. So that's certainly something we need to figure out. I can get the. Uh, budgeted amounts and actions in the last couple of years, uh, for you as well. Um, I think the terms of the commitment for employees of RHA is something that the city and county needs to discuss. Um, and then also what salary range, um, you are comfortable with. And I, I, I think that that. Can be informed by the housing authorities' conversation tomorrow night and figuring out, you know, what events that the job is doing entails. And, um, what the Housing Board might, uh, yes, that ranging.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
No, because that was the additional ask that was made at the end of last year. When Jackie came and gave a kind of budget presentation and said, we actually need. An additional three hundred. So that was part of our supplemental budget. So that, that is separate from. The, the bill that was placed in May of twenty twenty. So that that is separate from the the bill that was placed in May of twenty twenty three.
Did that ever get processed? Okay. What did it go to?
Do you mean who it was written to? It's written to like county government. It was supposed to go to essentially the work that ten two is doing for the infrastructure.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just went to that. Cuz originally, we had discussed that the three hundred thousand partially would be used for staff staffing.
Right, but then those grants arrived.
And then. Yeah, God, what a mess.
Yeah. And so and so that was something we had discussed at a previous council meeting, like it was originally supposed to go to staff, but now these grants have arrived. That would cover some staffing positions for these two new. Staff positions. So now can we, and so Jackie's request was can we redirect it to the to the infrastructure work? For the twenty units.
Yeah, I that that's where I got money to permeate my brain mother that was in a.
No, no, we discussed. Okay. Sounds like a work session in the making. Thank you very much. No, Chelsea?
No.
Okay, oh, councilmember Hill, is your hand still up or or? Do you want to add something final?
Oh, sorry, I left it up.
Okay, thanks. So let's move on to the acting city administrator report. I see that our we are 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 double city attorneys, Ellie Lebon and Hillary Graham have joined us. Thank you so much. Ms. Bushman.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Green, Mayor Proton Tharp. So this evening, I'd like to bring to your attention a matter that was raised by the Department of Revenue regarding the local citizens initiative from P B Swims. The department has determined that the current language in the initiative does not, and Hillary, please correct me if I'm misstating anything. The current language initiative does not meet the necessary standards for the effective tax administration collection. And so at this point, the path forward remains somewhat unclear. As our as our city attorney has submitted additional questions to the D O R, and we are awaiting their response. However, as Mayor Green pointed out, our city attorney is here tonight to provide a more clear overview of the potential actions. That we may need to consider at our next council meeting on the fifteenth.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, hello. So good intro, Sarah. The that's the gist of it. We don't really know where D O R is gonna come out on this, but it looks like they're leaning toward a sort of a. Procedural interpretation of what needs to be in a sales tax ordinance. And the initiative ordinance doesn't include those exact particulars. So they may find that it's they're not able to collect. At this point, we don't know. And we're still kind of in discussions with them. And I want to be clear that P B Swim's attorney has been participating in all of these discussions with me, so he's aware of what's going on. We're kind of working through it together. And we are hopeful that we might be able to convince the Department of Revenue that an initiated ordinance for a tax measure can be valid. I mean, that seems seems like a significant issue that the city and and its citizens would appreciate knowing. But that aside. The possibility is that we could attempt to sort of cure this. By the adoption of an emergency ordinance, which council would need to consider on the fifteenth at your next meeting. But we don't yet know from the Department of Revenue whether they would consider that sort of an adequate fix. So you may see on your agenda an emergency ordinance. By which the city would be sort of filling in the gaps that the Department of Revenue has pointed out. And that would only be that emergency ordinance would be adopted, but i- if council was so inclined, but would only be effective if the voters approved. The ballot question. So we're not doing anything to alter, you know, voters' consideration of the initiative. Or the ballot questions that are on the ballot for November fifth. But this would be taking action now so that if it were voter approved, excuse me, the Department of Revenue. Would be able to collect. So that's something that Sarah and the mayor wanted to bring up tonight, and I think that was wise. So that you're not surprised on October fifteenth if that appears on your agenda. But I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
I I guess my confusion is, is this just because of how the language was written? Or is this on the basis of whether or not a citizens initiative can exist period considering the tax revenue?
So it's not questioning the right of citizens to initiate legislation. It's saying that if citizens initiate legislation about taxes, they have to do it a certain way. And that the P B Swims and Swims initiative was deficient in in that in certain ways.
That makes me.
I think we can all blame Tabor.
Yes, we can. That makes me feel better cuz that's completely different vibe.
Yeah, so Ms. Graham is right. I really just didn't want to blindside or surprise anybody. If suddenly there was an emergency ordinance, if the D O R says, yes, that is a viable path forward. So if the measure passes, we can just move forward and and collect it. As the P B Swims. Citizens Initiative intends. And yeah, I just don't want anybody to be surprised. That's about it.
Thank you. I mean, I guess this was a question the the R would answer, but if it were to pass and we didn't get that fixed in, what would that mean?
Well, we've talked a little bit about what that would mean. I mean, I I think. But it probably means that if the tax were to pass, it wouldn't be effective January first, twenty twenty five. It may be possible that it could be in place by July first, twenty twenty five. So those are the two acceptable starting points for a new tax, according to the to state statute. So it's possible that we would be looking at a July first effective date. And that there might be some opportunity to to cure between the election date and July first. Or it's just really not clear what we're kind of taking it one step at a time right now.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you so much, Hillary, for tuning in.
Yeah, thanks.
Really complicated, and I really appreciate your expertise and your guidance.
Yeah, happy to enjoy the rest of your evening and thank you, Ellie, for sticking around.
Okay. I know. I see Jane Harrelson on I because this was sort of an unexpected addition to our agenda. Jane, did you have any public comment regarding this particular item? Or or Tiffany from P B Swims?
Uh, I don't have any public comment other than to thank, and I'm sorry that I did not thank the. Both lawyers before they signed off, but thanks. Oh, I you're still here, Ellie. Ms. Ellie, thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for working together to get through this. It's very complicated as Colorado statutes are. And so I'm sorry that. We didn't see this happening, but. It's what we have now, and I appreciate all of you working together for a solution. Thank you.
We is where we is. Thank you, Jane.
I don't feel like it's your fault that tape is complicated.
Tabor is complicated. Holy cow. Okay. Let's move forward. Let's move forward to resolution number forty nine. We'll take some action now. That is you, Ms. Bushman. Sorry, I'm jumping, I'm jumping trying to get into that section of my packet. Okay. It is eight A. It's page fifty seven is the communication form.
Good evening again, council. So we are now looking at a consideration to approve a master services agreement. Between the city of Leadville and Granite Telecommunications for the bundling of our telecommunications services. We are looking to save money annually and monthly. So before you is resolution number forty nine. And the background information on this is a little bit prior to my arrival. We noticed some inefficiencies and some higher costs. I believe that was Ms. Hewlett that brought that to light. And so to address this, we reached out to a company called Granite Telecommunications who kind of dove into our finances and our contracts. And sort of told us, you know, they could save us some money on bundling of our operations in this our senior telecommunications. And I do believe in the proposal. It's on the third page, but I'm in the proposal. It will show you how much we are potentially about to save annually. And monthly with this contract, it's approximately forty six hundred dollar, forty six hundred annually. And so it's it's that's the fiscal impact, legal issues. The M S A contains the standard provisions, and we had the city attorney make basically review everything just to ensure. And it is our recommendation that we approve resolution forty nine to save forty six hundred dollars annually. A big part of this was the switch from hard desk phones that lived in. Weird closets and corners that were never used to mobile, mobile phones, which are far more effective. I say the same age, so just to kind of give you an idea of where we're headed. But so there is a proposed motion in your council communication form as well as showing you all of the attachments for the M S A. But I will take any questions if you have them.
No questions for Ms. Bushman? I, again, old lady.
Do you want to keep your?
Ask, no. No, old lady asking tech question.
While receiving a text on my phone.
While receiving a text on my phone. So is this just pretty much cover our mobile phones or is this our internet as well? I don't know what weight is on the.
It's it's a combination of a few services. It's mostly all, it was the landlines, it's the fax, it's the mobile phones. It is, yes, also internet. The only other thing we haven't been able to bundle yet is. Or should we know it's not the mobile phones, it's you can't get Xerox, but that's okay. Our Xerox contract is ending and we're looking at changing what the fire department has. That's a conversation for another time, so. Did that answer your question?
Ki- kind of, yeah, I'm just, I. It's just all, when I was looking at the services they provide, I'm like, I don't really understand what these services are overall. I also do want to know what to do with the decrepit landline in my office, but that's a different. If there are no other, there are no other questions for Ms. Bushman. I would entertain a motion.
More faxes. Uh, councilmember Luna Landman to approve resolution number twenty nine, series of twenty twenty four. A resolution to approve a master service agreement with. Granite Telecommunications LLC for build um build bundling of telecommunications services.
Thomas seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
House member Best?
Yes.
House member Lillian?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Every little bit of savings and help. Let's move on to our next action item, which is actually a C O A. So this is a public hearing. And therefore, I have some words. Good evening. My name is Dana Green, and I am the mayor of the city of Leadville. This is a public hearing before city council to consider a certificate of appropriateness application by William Komkowicz. Leadville Manhattan Project LLC for a window replacement at the property known as the Hatton Block, six sixteen, six eighteen. Harrison Avenue. When the public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of his or her proposal. Followed by public comments from members of the public in attendance. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Once the public comment portion of the hearing is closed, we will not accept public comments unless it is in response to questions posed by the council with the applicant and city staff. Staff will then have an opportunity for clarification and rebuttal, which is staff's opportunity to respond to any comments made by the applicant or members of the public. Council members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant. At the conclusion of our questioning, the council will deliberate and render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi judicial, which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days after city council renders its decision. Are there any questions about the public hearing procedure? Okay, I will now open the public hearing for the Hatton Block, six sixteen, six eighteen Harrison Avenue. Certificate of appropriateness for window replacement, applicant William Komkowicz, Leadville Manhattan Project LLC. At this time, I will ask the city council members to disclose any ex parte communication or conflict of interest with the applicant. Um, so you'll have to tell me if if Mayor Proton Tharp or councilmember Hill. Okay, see none. Thank you, Mr. Willis, for joining us online with the staff. Please, excuse me, report highlights.
Hello, City Council, Alex Willis, Planner One, City of Leadville. I am on my way to the American Planning Association Conference down in Loveland. But I hit horrific traffic and am presenting from Starbucks. So if you have any background music, I apologize. I will mute myself when not talking. But I am here and ready to go over this really wonderful project. So I first want to thank Councilmember Hill for calling out an error that I had in the city council communication form earlier. I just did not remove some templated language, so some of you have seen some confusing language in the city council communication form. I've corrected that to follow suit with what is going on. So so this form is now completely accurate, in case any of you were wondering while reviewing it. So to give a brief overview of the process that happened, William Komkowicz came before us and wanted to. Receive do the whole process to get a certificate of appropriateness to replace windows on the Manhattan building. Which we all know and love on Main Street, on Harrison and Seventh. So the whole scope is just to replace all existing windows and some that were covered up with, you know, a period. Similar replacements. This project had a work session that went very well. And left very little to be done for the public hearing, so there wasn't, you know, anything that the commission really, you know, nitpicked about. So I'm just gonna briefly breeze over the staff report and then I'll let anyone ask me questions if they have any. We do have a historical photo here of the Manhattan Building that I'm showing on the screen. And we just wanna, I know that William wants to begin to bring the building back to some of higher functioning. To a higher functioning ability. So overall, we dived into the Sanborn maps as usual and found that the original building. Facing Harrison was a wooden building with various other outbuildings. And then through the years, eventually we get the brick addition at the back that pops up. Later on in the nineteen oh six overlay with the Sanborn maps. And then outbuildings still shift and we get somewhat what the footprint of the Manhattan Building looks like today. Existing photos of the Manhattan Building, if we were to zoom in and look at anything, we see that the windows are in bad disrepair. I will say that the only point of conversation in any of the meetings was about. Um, I will say that the only, um, point of conversation in any of the meetings was, um, about. The, uh, construction of the windows and whether they were going to be a four light window, which they will be a four light window. And that, um, the applicant William Komkowicz is doing an aluminum clad, uh, wooden window to the outside, just so it's easier for maintenance and upkeep. And the interior of the windows will remain to be wooden. Um, so this satisfied, um, the historic preservation's, uh, commission's, um, sort of attempt to keep this building looking, um. To its, uh, original or like replacing the windows to somewhat of the original shaping condition. Um, everything went through very well. The only, um, difference with finding and conditions is that the commission. Asked that if William Komkowicz and his team. Found any historical architectural features. Um. When they do any of the window, uh, um. Replacements, just to bring those, um, findings to the commission. Um, I know that William may be looking at coming forward with another, um, certificate of appropriateness application later on as he continues to rehabilitate this building. Um, and that is all staff has. Thank you, Mayor Green and Council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Willis? Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant to give a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't really have much more to say. First of all, thank you, Alex, and thank you all of you guys for considering this tonight. Um. Uh, and I just want to start by saying I love the Manhattan bar building, the same way that you guys do. And the whole intent of this. Uh, application is to replace the windows on the second floor. With windows of the exact same size, the exact same style, um, and the only changes will be to actually uniform the windows. Some of them have. Uh, just two paint, one pane on top and one pane on the bottom as opposed to, uh, four panes. And that was just has to do mostly with probably the. Uh, it was, the building was built in different stages or the windows were replaced in different stages. Uh, but uniforming the windows, um, but as I presented to the historic preservation. Uh, that all the windows will be the same size, exactly the same size, same depth. All the pains will be exactly the same size, all, all the way down to the battens will be the same size. Uh, one, you know, the one thing that some that we discussed is having an aluminum plaid. And that's just so we don't have to paint it every five years that it'll be a consistent color and it will be, it, it won't be some kind of crazy color. It will be like a charcoal. Dark charcoal consistent with, um, with the color. Uh, palette that we have approved in Leadville, um. And, uh, and just, and, and at the end of the day, just maybe get, uh, you know, relevant and energy efficient. But I think to the. I think that if we have a picture up there with the new windows, I don't think that you guys would be able to tell the difference.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Komkowicz? Is this similar to what? You did at the Harper Rose? Years ago?
Yeah, almost exactly.
Okay.
Um, uh, the similar, um, the, the, the one, the one. Uh, yeah, but very similar windows to the ones that are going in there. And the, and the only difference between this application and that application is those were. Windows that were actually replaced by historic granite. And so that, that we were replacing windows that were thirty years old that were remodeled from those, but the, the same. Same, almost exactly the same.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. I'd like to open now for public comment. Um. This, this portion of the public hearing, are there any? Members of the public in attendance in chambers who would like to provide comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to provide comment on this application? Ms. Bushman, please just holler at me if you see. Getting really easy here. Uh, seeing none. I would entertain. A motion to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Yes, move to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Luna Land seconds.
Hold in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Okay, um, I don't see that there's much for staff to clarify or rebut. Um. I'm going to do last, last call for comments, questions, concerns amongst council.
Just for the record, staff addressed everything. Oh, in condition, everything that's waiting to be determined compliance is met in the conditions. So there's no risk of approving this and then not being met later on. Um. It's in my condition, so it's pretty straightforward, it feels.
Excellent, thank you. Other comments?
Thank you so much for hearing this tonight, council.
Thank you for tuning in. Uh, I hope that you have, have safe travels and manage the traffic, Mr. Willis. Um, I would, uh, entertain a motion then.
Thomas moves to, uh. The city approved the Hatton Block window replacement PL dash twenty twenty four dash zero three five located at sixteen, sixty sixteen and six eighteen Harrison Avenue. Along with the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Yes, seconds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Little Leon?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
With that, this public hearing is closed. Let's move on to the remainder of our meeting, which I think is all me and I want to, I will first of all, I want to apologize for all of the paper. In this. Um. Basically, and I, and I want to thank Sarah Edwards for being here for questions, but the bottom line is this is a series of. Resolutions that have to do with the Tabor Opera House roof, so. Huh? It is a variety. I didn't really know how else to summarize it without repeating myself several times over. Thanks, you guys. Um, so the Tabor Opera House roof is, um. Twenty seven years old. Its life expectancy was twenty years. The, the plan of the Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation. Had been to kind of hold off on doing much roofwork until. Uh, a lot of the other interior rehabilitation was completed. That's because some of it would, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but would be easier to access through the roof. Um, so they're trying to push that off until the, the very end. But. Last year, um, they started noticing some water damage, especially on the southeast corner. And actually, if you go back there, you can see some water staining of the new brick. That had been laid. So damage to work that had already been done. And when they went and looked. Further, they saw ongoing damage to unrenovated areas. So there was real concern. That not addressing some of these problems with the roof would. Uh, just lead to ongoing deterioration of work that had already been done and possibly more complicated. Repairs needed to be done when they did turn their attention to the inside. So, uh, the Preservation Foundation engaged, um. This roofing specialist architectural and engineering firm with Jenny and Elsner Associates to do a roof assessment. They identified several, uh, critical and urgent repairs that they recommended be done before the winter to stop ongoing damage. And then, um, further recommended that they should really. Look at replacing the roof in one to three years. So. They, um, so they engaged a, a kind of a roof. Working company Academy Roofing to perform these emergent repairs before the snow starts to fall again. Um, they had been recommended by Hain Architects, who we're already familiar with, are the architects of records for the Tabor Opera House. Um, and they've actually done some prior work on the Opera House, not the stuff that needs to be repaired, but other stuff. So they are familiar with the roof. Um, and they can, uh, they were able to. Get on the schedule right away. And so because of the urgent nature of that and because of the, uh, you know, the amount that. Their repairs were going to cost, um, I went ahead and, and approved the professional services agreement. For Academy Roofing's work on the Tabor Opera House, um, last, well, now last month, because now it's October. Additionally, though, the Tabor Opera House would like to engage that architectural and engineering firm with Jenny and, um. Elsner to oversee that work. And that will be the, kind of the short term. Stuff. The longer term stuff is that very same firm, uh, WJE. Uh, they would like to retain them to do some, um, a, a, a roof. Uh. Assessment. So unlike just looking for problems with the roof, this would, this would engage things like actual measurements and analysis of. What would, and what need, what size of a roof needs to be replaced, that sort of thing. They would additionally do some mortar analysis to better. Understand how much more needs to be, uh, repaired and replaced, um, before the roof is replaced. And then the fourth thing is to engage that same firm to do. A full roof replacement design and produce construction documents. So that's four things we're considering here tonight. Because I've already signed a professional services agreement for Academy Roofing to do the emergency repairs. Um, the first resolution fifty is a resolution to ratify, um, that. Agreement for a, a PSA with Academy Roofing. The second resolution is to, um, approve a professional services agreement with. With Jenny and Elsner to conduct oversight and observation of those repairs. The third resolution is to approve a professional services agreement with. The same with Jenny and Elsner to perform the roof survey and further mortar analysis. And the final resolution is approving a PSA with that very same firm. Uh, to prepare roof replacement design and construction documents. Um. So all of the, um. The proposed, uh, scope of work, the bids, um, and. The kind of a, believe it or not, a, an excerpted version of the roof analysis are in your report. I think the original one is forty, forty-five pages long. So thank you, Sarah, for condensing that down a little bit. Um. Do you, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to turn to Sarah Edwards and just say, is there anything else you would like to add?
Um. I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to thank you, um, Mayor Green and also. Lori, this is, um, only my fourth month in this particular position at the Opera House. So it's my first time going through this process with you all to approve. Contracts and work, um, and, and in this case with the, especially the short term repairs with Academy. Um, just, you know, trying to figure out with Lori and Mayor Green, the most expedient way to move professionally. And publicly forward to, um, get these repairs done before winter. Um, so thank you for helping us navigate through, um, the pro- proper protocols. Um, I just wanted to clarify with the third and fourth agreements, which are related to us Jenny Elsner. So, um. It is their recommendation and the architects of record, the Haines, as well as. Um, other people on our board and consultants that we've worked with. Um, believe that roof repair, roof repairs is critical to make sure we don't. Lose any more brick and mortar this winter. Um, so those are the first two agreements that you're looking at. The second two are to help us prepare for a full roof replacement. We actually yesterday submitted a grant to the state historical fund. Um, and in, on December first, we'll submit another grant for, uh, DOLA with, um, the city's approval. Um, and those two pieces, we hope if they come through, it allow us to replace the roof next winter. Um, but yeah, insufficient drainage and sort of improperly designed roof in the first place twenty seven years ago. Um, is, uh, we actually removed a bunch of. Um, it's called parging. It's like material that you put over the brick, um, to try to sort of. Preserve it, um, without actually like. Historically preserving it, but, um, we removed that because it's not historically accurate when we did the initial. Remortaring of, of the four sides of the Opera House. Um, and we, you know. Believe that was the right call to, to do it that way, but it has. It has allowed more drainage to come onto the brick, showing us that the roof replacement is really our next priority. So. Um, allowing us to move forward with, with Jenny Elsner's construction documents. Immediately will allow those documents to be complete in January. So ideally those two grants and the construction documents. Um, all being completed, um, and teed up for January would allow us to replace the roof next summer if we get those funds. I also wanted to mention that, um, all of this work is being paid for with funds we did not spend from a DOLA grant we got for work that we did on the. The masonry last summer and DOLA has approved us to use the remaining, um, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for these projects. And any mortar repairs that we want to also complete once these projects are done. So, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
True. Also, our attorneys were able to look over the PSAs, uh, with, with Jenny and Sol, this. Elsner Associates. So, um, I just wrote. Legal none because they didn't really have any. Uh. A- any big concerns about the, the professional services agreement as they were. Um. Constructed.
Steve?
Other question?
Sure.
Okay, so I walked in that alley, um. Uh, quite a bit. North to south. Um, you, you said that last year, the southeast corner of H2O water damage. But, um, I've always been curious why on the. East side of the. Uh, northeast corner there. In the alley, it seems like there's some rubber up against, uh, between the gra- uh, a side of the, uh, street. And the building with sandbags in there. Is there drainage? Is there, you, you mentioned other improvements that you'll need in the future. Is there some kind of water dripping in that corner?
Thanks for your question, Steve. Um, my understanding, although I'm new, um, to this position, um, I'm not new to the Opera House, but. My understanding from staff reports over the years is that that's occasionally an area. Where we can see a little bit of water infiltrating into our dressing rooms, which are below the stage. Um, it's not an urgent concern, um, but. Uh, I believe our, we were gonna, our next phase of work before the roof became a more urgent, um, need. Was to begin to address the utilities, um. Infrastructure that will need to come from Harrison Avenue up the alley and into the building. Um, and as part of that work, we're going to have to, uh, open the alley to put the infrastructure in for utility work. And at that stage, we were also going to, and improve the drainage all around the. South side and east side of the building. I believe that's part of that entire plan. So it's in the, you know, in the grand scheme of the Tabor Opera. House renovations. It's. Uh, in one of our upcoming phases, but it's not as urgent, um, as a situation as some of the other things that we're dealing with, with the roof. The insufficient roof drainage and, um. Design leading right now to, you know, water going where it shouldn't go and eroding what's really soft historic brick and therefore soft, um, mortar as well, because you need a soft mortar mix to. To, uh, hold in soft. Brick. That's the ratio that's, uh, helps those bricks not break under pressure. So. Um, we're just trying really hard to work on the drainage situation from the roof to protect the brick investment that we've made.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
I know. I have learned through these documents, uh, so many new words like scupper and other. Other roof features I had to look up. It's actually, it is really interesting. Um. Leveling up in my understanding of roofs. These four motions are included under the proposed motion. I would like to do each one in, and vote on each one in sequence. They are a mouthful. So whoever feels like. They can perform. Typically on the tongue. I would entertain the first motion.
Thomas moves to approve resolution number fifty, series of twenty twenty four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville ratifying an agreement for professional services. With Academy Roofing, Inc. to conduct emergency roofing repairs on the Tabor Opera House.
Yes, seconds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Little Leon?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to resolution number fifty one.
Best moves to approve resolution number fifty one, series of twenty twenty four, a resolution approving an agreement. For professional services with Swiss Jenny Elsner Associates Incorporated. To conduct oversight and observations at emergency roofing repairs in the Tabor Opera House.
Thomas, seconds.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Little Leo?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yeah.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tharp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lona Land moves to approve resolution number fifty-two, series of twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving an agreement for professional services with with uh Jenny. Elsner Associates Inc. uh to prove a, to perform a roof survey and uh. Motor analysis on the Tabor Opera House.
It's, I told you.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tharp?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Little Land?
Yes.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Thomas moves to improve resolution number fifty-three, series of twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving an agreement for professional services. With Wes, Jenny, Elsner Associates for the preparation of a roof replacement design. And construction documents for the Tabor Opera House.
Yes, seconds.
Um, Councilmember Little Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Holy cow. Thank you so much for as, for as long as those took. That went really, really pretty fast. Um, thank you all so much for your help and thank you. Good luck. Good luck. It's, it's, yeah, it's unfortunate timing, but I think it's just has to be done. Um, great. Well, let's move on to public comments.
I have a question. Um, I don't read the paper all the time. Did they ever figure out what the bricks were falling from? Did they fix that?
So the, the, you mean on the front cornice? So there had, my understanding, maybe. Councilmember Thomas could weigh in, but there had been part where the cornice had had sort of detached from the building. And so some, some birds had been making nests in there and water was able to get in and affect, you know, kind of detach the. The bricks from the mortar. And so as that pressure kind of grew, it finally just. Dumped out from behind the part of the detached cornice and that is, that is uh, that is repaired. It, I think they're planning to do a, like the front where the scaffolding is. The whole plan had been to do redo that or, you know. Repair and restore it. So I don't know um, that, that just, again, it's one of those things that just happened early. Didn't wait until it was its turn. Um, but that's what that scaffolding is up to, to do that and the rest. But right now it is, it is safe and has been secured since that incident. Other comment? Other public comment online? All right. Well, let's move on to my report. Um, first of all. Were you making? Thank you, Sarah, and.
My internet failed like right as you were, I hope, approving the fourth one. So thank you all for your um, for your time and your support.
Yeah, I'm really, really, I'm, I'm excited about all of this, and thank you for arranging it all. What a tremendous amount of work went into that. Um, okay, so uh, for mayor report, first of all, I, I just want to give my sincere thanks. Um, shout out to various members of of the county government. Who've been actively reaching out to include and invite the city for participation in various events or notification of events that are. Either have some overlap with the city or adjacent to the city. So this would include ob- obviously working with community builders for. Our um comprehensive plan. Um, Tim Bergman has uh reached. He actually, he just sent us an email about the local transit soft launch next week. Um, he's reached out to, to see if the street department can help with some of the repairs on County Road eleven. Um, he has uh, you know, just really kind of kept the city in the loop for a variety of. Um, things that county is exploring to improve pedestrian and bicycle traffic in areas that are not technically in the city, but they're very city adjacent. So like tw- where twenty-four and ninety-one meet and like right where the city ends at uh where McWethie and twenty-four cross. Um, and he invited uh city staff to that um. To that sort of kickoff meeting with the group that's doing the analysis of how, how to better improve um. Uh, pedestrian safety in those areas. Um, Jane Schaefer from, from Prose uh uh reached out and asked. Um, if I would participate in looking over the bids for the R F P that they put out for a climate action plan since. Kind of involves city and county. Um, and Catherine Greer, their grant writer, and I are. Planning to get together and talk about this um big federal grant for um. I don't know what they're particularly looking for, but this would be for infrastructure work and obviously for my little passion of stormwater drainage. That involves city and county too with West Park. Um, so I'm just really excited. I think this is. A really solid movement toward improved communication between our two governmental en- entities and a better partnership. So my sincere thanks to, to those people. Um, the second thing is I've been attending some. Webinars on all the stuff with property taxes and the new um. Some of the, the things that have passed through our state legislature that's mostly impacts. Twenty twenty-six and moving forward. But one of the things that, that I am struck with is. In the past, when we do our budgeting, our property taxes, we have traditionally kind of shot for. A ten, thirteen, nineteen percent increase from year to year. Um, starting in twenty twenty-six, it sounds like our, the revenue that we can. Retain from or that we can receive from property taxes is going to be tightly restricted to five something percent. Plus a little adjustment. So looking down the pike. You know, not property taxes, not the hugest contributor to our, our budget, but it is the second most huge contributor to our budget. So I think we're gonna really have to continue to tighten our belts.
The rest of the money go to the state?
You know, I'm not, so that's some of the stuff I'm still, because right now, the last one I went to, there was a huge amount of confusion between. The constraint of the assessment rate and the constraint of the revenue, and people were getting them mixed up.
Yeah, I, I think the idea behind it theory is that it's supposed to be a. Limitation on what can be collected to be. Uh, like. It gets collected and it just disappears. Uh, that's in theory. And they, they do really quick and I don't know that they.
So I, so the last one I went to, which was something that Dola presented, like there were people commenting like, I'm more confused now. Before I attended. And, and so I think there is just going to be a lot of stuff shaking out. But the bottom line is that the, the legislation both is, constrains the assessment rate and the revenue. Percentage that, that entities can collect. And even though the state has a plan to backfill. Um, what communities are not, you know, don't, don't collect. Leadville Lake County are not large enough to um to qualify for that backfill. So that is too bad for us. Um, so we'll see, twenty twenty-six is still sort of a wild card, but the bottom line is that property taxes will still continue to go up. They just will not, you know, like, we shouldn't be seeing these. My property taxes went up by fifty plus percent. You know, we should see a, a, an end to that, which is great for individuals. Um, the, and the, the, the third thing is uh, so September thirtieth, which was sort of our. Deadline for putting community funding requests came and went. I've received three. I'm gonna be sending those forms out to you. At our next regular meeting on October fifteenth, I would like to um review them in public and make some decisions, so. That's all I got.
And how, how much money do we have? Get around of grants?
From our uh, from our contingency, we have about eight thousand dollars, which is. That's what I put on, the, this is what's available in that form also. Okay, council reports.
Uh, I can give a short one. Um, I just want to echo what you were talking about, about improved communication between city and county. I think that's wonderful. And I personally have been participating on the project management team for the Community Builders. City-county effort to develop a comprehensive plan. It's going really well and uh there's going to be a meeting for a. Broader amount of input on that plan on October thirtieth, and Community Builders sent out an invitation quite recently to. Forty people representing all sorts of people in the community, so I think that's, I think it's gonna be really good. And then I also want to let council know that I was able to submit our grant application. For uh city hall work. We were planning initially to do some rehabilitation work, but then we met with the civil engineer. And architect, and they suggested that we do construction documents first, so I submitted a grant application. To complete those construction documents. Total amount of the work is fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. We're requesting. Forty-three thousand and fifty dollars for the grant because the city will be required to chip in a twenty-five percent cost share. I've asked for a forgiveness of five percent of our cost share to cover our indirect and administrative costs. So hopefully the state will agree to that. So if they agree to the um five percent cut in our cash match, just thinking ahead to budget season. The city's match would be ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to get the construction documents done for city hall.
Thank you for that work. My gosh.
Oh, let's see, I'm gonna announce on December thirteenth if we get it or not.
Okay, it's an auspicious date.
Yes.
On a Friday, is it? Okay, great. All right, other council reports.
So uh, my program at the Atticus is very, very close to getting an operational shelter. Um. I've been saying for quite a long time that um. Nonprofits alone can't bear the burden of the safety net locally and that local government needs to get involved, so. I'm uh asking council for support on getting some city funding to get this uh shelter for our most vulnerable. Community members operational. Uh, we do have some funds, but they're somewhat restricted. Um, this would be a winter-only shelter from November first to May thirty-first overnight only, so it would be check-in, check-out. Um, I have a building inspector coming. To look at the place tomorrow. It's uh, the location is the old district offices on Screw Street, right across from the bus barn. Um, it is currently empty, so that is one of the great attractions of it. And one of the reasons it's empty is it's not in great shape and uh hasn't really been used for much other than storage. So there'll be a little bit of retrofitting uh required, I believe, by the building inspector. I have a meeting in shape in the next week um, uh, pre-adication meeting with planning and zoning. Uh, I've had approvals from the fire marshal and public health. So we're very, very close. I have an operational plan, which I'll share with you all as well. Um, the one thing we really don't have to, to operate throughout the whole winter season, which is going to be soon upon us. Is enough funds. Um, so that's my, that's my plea and my excitement. Um, this is desperately needed here. I have every confidence that we are going to solve our housing crisis. Um, but it's gonna take years to do that. And in the meantime, we have pretty desperate citizens who are in need of shelter, so. Um, I'm happy to announce this and also uh begging for support. Um, sometime soon. Thank you.
One of the things that Councilmember Best and I had discussed was. Um, trying to see if we, because we're running up to the deadline for dedication of urban funds. When I talked to Crystal today, we are actually not entirely sure what we have. Um, there apparently are some obligations of funds that we had promised that have not been invoiced yet, so. She's also trying to figure out like what we, what we have. Um, so that may be something that we can discuss at a future council meeting once we actually have some vague number of. Or ha- have a vague number that, that we can operate off of, but.
If you think of no matter use of our funds in an emergency shelter.
Okay. Other council reports?
Um, we have, uh, as you guys can tell, I have really strong feelings about the regional housing authority. Um, and we're having a meeting tomorrow. Uh, uh, well, I guess a makeup for the meeting that we had missed. So expect a little bit more. If you have any immediate feedback. One-way communication to me would be great. I will respond to you, so you know, but I'll hear you. I uh. I think it's really important that we are aware of what possibilities we have, whether or not they're. Accomplishable before anytime soon. Um, compared to, you know, when the county moves on their light tech project, I think it doesn't really matter. I think ultimately we have to think long-term. So uh, I plead to y'all uh to shoot me out in the earlier session. Uh, earlier in the session about uh what future the regional housing authority holds and what uses we could have for it. And then we also internally have a rental project that we're holding on to. So it would also potentially benefit us directly um if we were to have a place where I could live in the future. I don't disagree at all with Sarah that we have to have a solid plan and funding to be able to operate that, but. Doesn't mean we can't strive for it. Um. Uh, on that news, there is no direct updates to the process of hiring someone. Other than uh we are going to be reviewing, my assumption is uh the. Um, job description that was drafted up by some of our board members here soon uh this month, I think. Think, um, so look forward towards a job description there. There's been. I've heard of some appetite from some really um experienced people in that field. I don't know if they'll still have that appetite a few months later, but uh here's hoping. Um, and of course, it also means uh, which I'm sure we'll discuss heavily uh what the, where the two A funds go, but. We're gonna need funding to support that. And I think the budget that was requested seems reasonable, at least at the in first initial impressions. Uh, we of course still have to meet and talk about what the budget uh will ultimately be at the regional housing authority level. Which we'll be doing tomorrow night. Uh, but it, it's a relatively low amount compared to what it used to be. We're looking at a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. And previously it was much higher. Again, as Sarah has addressed, that is because of the project being handled at the county level, not the. Regional Housing Authority level anymore, so that's, you know, completely different dynamic, but generally speaking, pretty straightforward process, so. Feeling optimistic and good about the future of the housing authority. Do you think we have to invest properly into it and. Be a little bit more active in having those conversations as a council? Um, I'm looking forward to potentially also having a conversation in terms of a shelter. Um. Yeah, it'd be great to be able to provide that service, just speaking from my experience as a direct service um worker with a lot of our community members who are homeless. Uh, I could think of like five people that could immediately utilize that and be in a much, much better, healthier spot. And that's knowing what place the building's in. Uh, so. Just keep that in mind. Um, once we do move into budget uh season, that's gonna be a very. Important conversation and those stories, you know, are, should definitely be. Present in our minds when we make those decisions, because again, ultimately, we are here to represent everyone in the community and those people are members of the community. Um, so yeah, other than, oh yeah, the last one, uh, the E A F program is closed again, so. Uh, not taking any new um applications. We're completely out of funds. We have like a thousand dollars left. Uh, for the winter time, and that was after getting fifty thousand dollars additional from the county. So goes to show how much is needed for that. That's for a bit context for anyone who may have forgotten or doesn't know, the E A F program Energy Assistance Fund is a program ran by. That's a bit complex for anyone who may have forgotten or doesn't know, the EAF program Energy Assistance Fund is a program ran by C four, uh, entirely by me. Um, it's a program that helps with any home energy, uh, health or safety upgrades. Uh, does have to be two A home. That's a little vague on purpose, so, uh, it's a widely popular program amongst our community members. It's well utilized, especially in our Latino community. Uh, so that program unfortunately is closed, uh, at this time. So if you had anyone who was interested, um, you can tell them it's closed. Hopefully we get funding for next year. We'll be asking the county for, uh, a real bond map, but we'll see.
Uh, Councilmember Hill, or Mayor Proton Tharp, do you have any reports to submit?
Uh, nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Thank you, guys. Um, public meetings planner was not in our packet, but we can get it off the website in the upper right hand. It's in the packet. So this happened again. You sent that thing, I clicked on it and it took me to the new number, but the old packet.
It's always added in the packet this time.
That's what, that's, no.
I don't, we're not saying that, to be honest.
I know, I, okay, there is, I stand corrected. I need to get my life in order. It just, there wasn't a little bookmark for it. That's why I didn't get there easily. Um, okay, any additions, subtractions?
Questions?
Yeah.
The tentative six P M meeting that we could make?
Yes.
Is a worksday.
Is they, so that's the beginning of our budget.
I will be out of time.
Okay. Um, I'm not entirely sure right now what will be on that, but typically in the past, what we've done is each Tuesday, that's not a regular meeting, we sit down and we take a couple departments and we look over kind of their budget and a lot of times it's, you know, like we are not specifically involved with line items. We get to look at the line items, but it's really more like, what is this department, you know, what is their goals? Is the money that they've, you know, they're requesting, is that aligned with that, et cetera, et cetera. Usually, I mean, it's interesting.
Good.
Um, all of our departments have been asked to hold spending at what they are this year, which is hard because salary increases are, um, are, 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 continue to be a very important mechanism to attract and retain qualified people for their roles. So what that means is a lot of the departments are trying are, are, are limiting their, like their capital expenditures or their supplies um, in order to meet their desired salary increases. So heck of a year. Um, I don't have anything except I know the P and Z meeting on the ninth has been canceled.
So you mentioned that we wouldn't be getting through every department on the eighth, but there's nothing scheduled for the twenty second.
Yes, uh, we just haven't gotten that far out. Usually what, and what we, what we will typically do is send out like, here's the schedule. Like on this day, we're gonna deal with these departments and on this day we're deal with those departments. Um, we are a little bit, I've finally convinced the city administrator to actually take a vacation. That's not a fake vacation where she just works remotely. Um, and so she is, she is off grid and out.
A fake vacation is a vacation.
Vacation? Vacation. So I'm super proud, I'm super happy, but that's part of the reason why we don't have a budget schedule right now, but it will be okay. We will administer one as, as soon as she, she returns next weekend.
We'll survive.
We will survive and hopefully we'll benefit from a newly refreshed city administrator, because it has been one heck of a year, one heck of a summer. I, uh, okay, well, I want to thank everyone. I know you guys are missing the vice presidential debates and probably regretting it. Hopefully this was more entertaining.
I don't know about that.
But it is seven fifty five. Sarah, we were both wrong. And this city council meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.